And Northern Berkshire Community Television. If Member Blanchard does call in, we will need to take roll call votes. But until then, we will be able to just vote. Having one more vote. Okay, I think that is it for the logistics for this evening. With that, if you can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We do have two public hearings, so we're mindful of the time. But the first item of business is the approval of minutes. And before us, we do have the minutes for Wednesday, October 7th, 2020. And all members aren't able to vote on these.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes from October 7th, 2020, and to also waive the reading of the minutes.
I have a motion by Member Duval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Novak. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone to call? No questions, that is unanimous. I will admit another person. There you go. Sorry. You might call back. Oh, no, there it is. There's Brian. Okay. That brings us to public comment. Who's still calling in? Hold on. Phone number that just called in, last four digits, 7881. Can you please state your name for our attendance frontwards?
It's me, Jerry.
Hi, Jerry, thank you. And Jerry, you might want to mute your phone for a little bit.
Um, that may be a problem.
Okay, that's okay. Is there anyone who is on the Zoom call who wishes to speak to the board under public comments this evening? Okay. All right then. Hearing none, I will go ahead and move on to old business. Under old business is the approval of pledge of inventory and other documents. This is with the transfer of all alcohol package store licenses from O'Garry's Package Stores to Animal Corp. Doing business as O'Garry's Package Stores, both located at 60 Commercial Street. I don't think there's any paperwork in our packet, but this was just some missing paperwork from the... Do I have it? Sorry. Yes, it's probably... My apologies. They all look the same. Let me try to remember. It did come back to us from the ABCC. We were asked to provide additional information. Town Council, can you remind me what the...
This is Attorney Ian Hedges as well, representing Neil Licker. I'm happy to clarify why...
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Sorry.
But I think we, like you mentioned, we were in front of the board back in September for the transfer of the liquor license, and that was approved by the town. I think there was just a missed box that was checked on the application up to the ABCC for the pledge of license. The transfer was included in that paperwork, but the checkbox for the pledge was not. So we are just back in front of the board tonight just to approve that.
Okay. I was expecting Attorney Porter, I believe.
Yes, he had another hearing he had conflicted with tonight.
Okay, that's why I was confused. My apologies.
Okay.
And this was... So pledge of inventory and pledge of collateral is what is needing approval this evening? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Those are the two documents. Okay. And this has been reviewed in all in order at this point?
Yes, it is.
Are there questions for Town Council or for Attorney Hedges representing Animal Corp?
Of course.
Okay. Joe, anything?
No.
Okay. What is the board's pleasure? When it comes to the fact we need a motion to approve the pledge of inventory and pledge of collateral. And do they need to be done separately, or can they be done together?
I think you can do it together.
Okay. But they should be stated as pledge of inventory and pledge of collateral.
Right.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve a pledge of inventory and a pledge of collateral in regards to the transfer of all package store licenses from O'Garry's Package Store Incorporated at 60 Commercial Street Adams to Neil Licker Incorporated, against O'Garry's Package Store, 60 Commercial Street Adams.
I have a motion by Member Duval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Member Novak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone to call? That is unanimous. Okay.
Great, thank you, everyone.
No, thank you. We are just about to 7:10 PM. I don't really want to start with new business. With one minute to 7:10.
The, if you wanted to, the ratification should go fairly promptly, if you wanted to take that out of sequence.
I might just hold on. But thank you. I have about 20 seconds to 7:10. And I don't think it will be that long in that short order. And that gives me a moment to let in Mr. Cretto, who I believe is calling in for this So I have 7:10 on the dot. And we do have... I'm having people calling in. We do have a public hearing for the transfer of an all alcohol license, a change of license type application. And this is for the PNA at 13 Victory Street, all alcohol club license, and changing this to Victory Lounge Incorporated at 13 Victory Street for an all alcohol general on premises license. So do you need a motion to go into the public hearing? Yes. If someone would like to make that motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to go into public hearing for the information we just provided.
Okay, thank you. Joe, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are now in public hearing. And I believe we have a number of folks on the call who are representing Victory Lounge. Is there anyone here representing the PNA?
I'm going to hear.
Okay. The board has been provided with all of the paperwork with regard to this transfer of alcohol license and also the change of license type. Town Council has refused the paperwork.
I have it, yes.
Yep. And it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's straightforward.
It does seem like it's all in order. I know that those of you with Victory Lounge, if maybe you would just take a moment and introduce yourself, maybe we could start with, is it Brian?
Yes, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. My name is Brian Introvissato, Victory Lounge.
Thank you, Brian. Peter?
Yes, Peter Cretto, from the Victory Lounge.
Okay. James, are you also with Victory Lounge?
Yes.
Okay. Great. I know that a number of you have met with town staff to go over your plans for Victory Lounge. And this paperwork has been in the works for a few weeks now, maybe months. Is there anything you wanted to share with the board?
Overall, we're excited about, you know, doing this. This is something that's, you know, been on our agenda for a little while now. You know, it came up, the opportunity, and we want to, you know, beautify the building, but not only beautify the building, we want to, you know, inside and out, but we also want to be able to bring stuff to the community, you know, not just Adams itself, but, you know, Berkshire County, we feel lacks a lot of, you know, entertainment, and we want to be very unique in that field. We don't want to just rely on the Saturday, you know, Friday, Saturday night crowds, but looking into, you know, performances, magic shows potentially, different venues, you know, dances, live performances, you know, professional musicians, you know, we want to bring stuff to the community that's not here currently, so.
When we're at page four, in the reopening of Massachusetts.
Exactly.
Just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. Thank you, Brian, I appreciate the overview. Other questions? Anyone? Any comments? Is there anyone on the call that, from the public, that wanted to speak on this matter? What do you think, Joe? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question or two. Now, the sale of this building, wasn't the PNA owned by the Polish National Alliance? Owned a lot of buildings within the United States, the PNA. Did you buy the building from the, I believe their headquarters in Chicago, if I'm not mistaken? Was that where it was purchased, was made from?
That's correct. It was, you know, there's the PNA in their local here, and then they have clubs throughout the United States. It's an insurance company. I purchased the building through an entity called the Wing Horsemen LLC, and I acquired that approximately 10 months ago, I would say.
Okay. And once again, the connotations of a lounge. Now, is this going to be for family settings, for people to come in for sit-down dinners and lunches and that sort of thing?
Well, eventually, what we plan on doing is incorporating some form of food, you know, but for like a restaurant atmosphere, not so much. This is going to be more of a bar atmosphere, but it's going to be family-friendly, you know, on certain venues. Again, you know, having, selling tickets and potentially having magic shows or comedy shows and other great things to bring to the community, you know, those are things that we're working through. And, you know, obviously, we're open-minded to, you know, thoughts and concerns from the town.
Now, the reason I'm asking, pretty similar to what Chair Ben Hoy asked, if you're not going to be serving food, you know, you can't say popcorn and a hot dog is food, so will that curtail your opening, if you're planning on just, you know, your revenue coming mostly from your alcohol sales?
Well, that's correct. We plan on, you know, serving some form of food. If we do open up in, you know, in the midst of this pandemic, we want to serve some form of food and be mask compliant, and we understand it wouldn't be any major different menus. It'd be more like, you know, hot dogs, burgers, those types of...
I'm sorry? On the food service?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. We plan on offering a limited-to-midsize-bar menu, which I just became serve-safe and allergen-awareness certified within the last few days in preparation. Our initial plan was to open the kitchen eventually, and due to the pandemic situation and the mask compliance requirements at the moment, that initial plan has been changed to acquire the particular license now, so we would be able to provide a food service from the first day we're open.
Okay, and just last question now. Do you have sprinkler systems in that building? And do you have the proper type of ventilation for cooking? All of those types of things that will have to be looked in by our building inspector, our building commissioner, are those things all up to code?
As far as we know, the building does have sprink... Across the main floor, the building has up-to-date and up-to-code sprinkler system. So ventilation, I believe there's proper ventilation, and we can apply that if necessary, but...
Hello? 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 Yes.
Just, can you speak, just hold on, someone just called in, have the last four digits, 2425. May I ask who that is?
Yeah, it's Rick.
Oh, hello there.
Hello, I got out early.
All right, excellent. So that should change things for the board, but it'll be a roll call vote going forward, as we do have a member to promote. I apologize for making this.
You're really coming in garbled. It's very hard to hear. I don't know, there's something interfering somewhere in connection. But I'll just call there, and I wish you well, and I hope that our community and your group work well together so that this can be successful.
Yeah, we are extremely excited to be part of the community, and we definitely want to work harmoniously with the town.
Brian, I'm just going to stop you for a moment. Brian, James, and Peter, are you all in the same location?
Yeah.
If so, if two of you could mute your microphones while one is speaking, I think that would help with the feedback and so forth. It is an awful lot of feedback that we're getting.
Madam Chair?
All right.
Yeah, so I think, I think the building commissioner, Jerry Garner, wanted to address one of the questions that Member Novak had. Is that correct?
Yes. The PNA Hall has a full sprinkler system on the first floor, which was required at the time. Actually, was being installed when I left in 2007. They put a full sprinkler system in on that first floor. The PNA is also, or these gentlemen have asked to put a additional accessible restroom into the, into the place and remove another one, but that hasn't been applied for yet. I can say that I will be going up there very shortly, probably within the next two weeks to do an inspection up there. But I can tell you that the hood, as it stands right now, is not compliant. It's only for, like, boiling water. It's not for smoke or grease-laden vapors.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
And Vice Chair Blanchard, in case you're not aware, we are at the public hearing for the transfer of all alcohol license from PNA to Victory Lounge, and we're still in the public here.
Right, I gathered that from the conversation.
I just wanted to get you...
Thank you.
James, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes. We're aware that the ventilation system in the kitchen is not up to date. We are getting quotes because we wanted to add an up-to-date ventilation system with fire suppression in the kitchen.
Okay, thank you. Let's go again.
Okay. Member Duval?
As far as the discussion, it was indicated that there will be a bar menu that will be developed. Do you have an anticipated, estimated opening date? Because you can't open now, like, the bar does have a... I'm not sure about the governor's rules, but if you do have a bar menu that makes food there, that the kitchen's ready to go, what have you, can they open?
We're hoping on, based on the time schedule and finances, of course, we're hoping by January 1st, not February.
Okay. Yeah, so for this, I assume for this public hearing, that the neighbors were all given a notice of this hearing?
The transmission does not require a warrant or... Who was advertised?
Okay, was advertised, how was it advertised?
In the Berkshire Eagle. It was published on October 3rd.
Okay. As you have said, somebody may be aware that there have been some concerns expressed by, because, you know, so far, of the local bars are located in neighborhoods, that's when, that's when, it's the way it is in Adams and other communities, there have been some concerns from the neighbors in the past. So do you have an idea what your hours are going to be, or how you're going to work within the neighborhood to work with the neighbors? It may be too early to discuss this, I was just curious.
We were anticipating, you know, potentially 2:00 in the morning, but we don't, and we don't want to disrupt neighbors, so we want to maintain a safe environment that's well-controlled. You know, we are open-minded to, again, any opinions from the town and surrounding neighbors. We are well aware that we're surrounded very close by residential homes, so we want to make sure that the neighbors are happy as well.
Okay, good. And the last question is in regards to the transfer of a liquor license. I know there was the fee paid for the license. The board has nothing to do with that transfer, is that correct? The fee being paid, or the amount that's under our, under the local board's control, right?
It's $100 for us, but it's 200 for the ABCC, 100 for us, and then the license fee is, that we can, for the regular... Okay. Member Blanchard, do you have anything you wanted to ask in public hearing?
No. I know we discussed this at the subcommittee meeting, and everything seemed to be in order, unless there's been any drastic changes since then, I have nothing.
If there's no further public comment or any questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
And, sorry, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, Joe?
Roll call, will you?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a, is Rick?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine. Sorry, it was a little messy. My apologies. So the matter before us is the transfer of all alcohol license, as well as the change of license type. And both of those items should be mentioned in the motion. Is that correct, or do we have to handle that separately?
I think you can do that.
Together, okay.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion for approval of the transfer of the all alcohol license and change of license type application from the Julius Wobaki Society, GRP 1365, Polish National Alliance, doing business as the Julius Wobaki Society, doing business as the Polish National Alliance on 13 Victory Street Adams, all alcohol club license, the Victory Lounge Incorporated on 13 Victory Street. I can't read that one, Incorporated, all alcohol general on premises license. And that's it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Member Novak.
I'll run that, Paul Staves there. I'll second that motion.
I'll second by Member Duval. Any discussion? Hearing none, because it is a roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, that is unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck to all of you.
Thank you very much. Very exciting.
And you're more than welcome to stick around, but I won't be offended if you hang up.
Thanks. Bye-bye. Take care.
Thank you. So we are a little late for our second public hearing, so my apologies to those of you who called in for a 7:20 PM tax classification hearing. We are running about eight minutes late on that, but I do need a motion from the board to go into a public hearing for the tax classification.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to go into public hearing for tax classification.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Duval, so I have a second.
I'll second.
Second, from Vice Chair Blanchard. This is a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, that is unanimous. So we are in the public hearing for the tax classification. We had a workshop on Monday with Town Assessor Donna McDonald, Town Accountant Mary Beverley, and Town Treasurer Kelly Wright, who provided the board with some information prior to the public hearing for us to review. And all three are back on the call to join us this evening, so I appreciate your time again this evening. As I mentioned on Monday, I was going to turn things over to Town Assessor McDonald to just give us an overview of the materials that were provided and get us started.
Okay. Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Every year, we do this, in the fall typically, the board conducts a public hearing to determine whether or not the town will have a classified tax structure. The hearing is required before we can get a tax rate approved by the Commissioner of Revenue. This law also removes the assessors from the decision-making process. The assessors do not set the tax rate. However, what we do do is furnish analytical data to the Board of Selectmen so that they can make an informed decision as to whether or not they go with the single tax rate or a classified tax rate. We have been classified tax rate since 1991, which means the residential properties get taxed at one amount, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property get taxed at another. So with that being said, the valuation of the town went up by almost $7 million total valuation. Of that 3.2 million was in new growth. So that's a good sign, a good trend, we're hoping for the best. If we, from there, if we take the total levy and we divide it by the valuation, we come up with a single tax rate of $23.38. Now, this is where the board needs to make their informed decision as to whether or not the single tax rate of 23.38 should be implemented versus going with the classified tax rate. I have provided the selectmen with various options, which we discussed some of them on Monday, but for the most part, I would like to just mention, before we go into that, I just added to your packet the tax rates of the surrounding properties. And because we were a little concerned with the commercial rates on Monday night, just as an aside, North Adams... North Adams' commercial rate last year was $40.66, and Pittsfield's commercial rate was $40.36. Neither one of those communities have completed their tax rate as of this time, but that was requested. So, back to the decision-making process for the board. There are several scenarios, and I opted to go with a 5% differential, only because you can go 1%, and it's just pennies on the dollar. If, if the board continues with the 1.15 shift factor, that would be an increase of roughly 74 cents on residential side and 90 cents on the commercial side. The others, we can discuss all the others if you like, but I would like to open it up to your questions at this point.
Any questions for the Town Assessor?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Yeah, just, not a question about that, but could you tell me who's there or on the call that wasn't Monday?
Sure. So, Donna McDonald, Mary Beverley, and Kelly Wright are on the call, as they were on Monday. Additionally, on the call, not necessarily related to this issue, is Building Commissioner Jerry Garner, and then Giaccherino from I Berchers. In the room are your three colleagues, Town Council, the Town Administrator, Deb Dunlap, Town Clerk, and Peter Gentile from Northern Berkshire Community Television.
Okay. Cooper, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to ask the same questions if there was nobody new there.
You can go ahead and ask a question if you would like.
Well, I don't have one at the moment, but...
Okay.
I'd just like to say, for people that are watching, as was mentioned, we had a workshop on Monday, so it's not like we're just sitting here, you know, unfounded, but this is always a tough subject to discuss and a tough decision to make, because taxes in this town affect everybody, some more than others.
Well said, Joe, and, you know, as Donna mentioned, she does provide an awful lot of information for us to review, to consider, why a healthy discussion at a workshop on all of these materials, and then a couple of days to think through them, at least for myself, is just helpful to forthcoming with this decision.
Could I interject at this point?
Sure.
I just wanted to remind everyone, regardless of what tax, well, rate you choose, that the debt exclusion, the school, that's $1.15 that's added to the tax rate. So, just so everyone is fully aware that, you know, it's, we're still carrying that debt, and that it does add to our tax rate. And the average house is about $140,000, and depending if, once again, if the Board of Selectmen chooses the 1.15 shift, that would be, on average, about $100 for the $140,000 house. An increase.
So, Madam Chair, there's a lot of information provided by the Board, but at this point it's very little that the Board can make decisions on in regards to the tax rate itself. The single tax rate based on growth, which is relatively good, and the anticipated, Donna indicated at the workshop, having a much better, hopefully having a much better year next year, but the Board of Selectmen, based on the budget that was approved by Town Meeting, based on growth, we put that information all together, and it comes up with a single tax rate of $23.38. And then, our decision, the only decision we have this evening, is to determine the split between the residential and the residential. That's it. We can't lower the tax rate, raise the tax rate, it's, this is what it is, based on growth, based on the budget that was approved by Town Meeting. So, and, and, and our decision is to determine the shift factor, which we've been relatively, we decided the 1.15% split pretty much over the last 10 years, the average out to that anyway, so we've been pretty consistent in our decision-making in that regard. The rest of the commercial tax rate and our follow-up communities in Washington County, the two cities is, as mentioned, $40, but that does not have a lot to do with when a business moves into a community, there's a lot more to do with what a decision is made for a business to move to a community, and if it was based on the tax rate, we'd be having people knocking on our doors to get in, which is not the case here. We do have businesses, we are on a good track moving forward. Businesses are coming to us, and things are happening, but having a, the commercial tax rate does not determine the amount of businesses that you have. There's a lot more to it, a lot of the time seemingly we won't through all that, but we have one decision to make, so I'll stop right there.
I'd like to ask, I, I know that we took some money, I believe it was through free cash towards lowering the tax rate, how much money did we take out for, from our free cash to lower, to help try to lower the tax rate?
$250,000.
And I just want to let the people in town know that too, that, you know, we're pitching in what we can, feeling comfortably, keeping the town economically solvent, so that's another consideration. And another thing that people should realize, I think we hearken on this, at least I do, is that, as it stands now, we don't have water user tax.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And we have volunteer fire department, which helps us quite a bit as far as, you know, payouts to employees and that type of thing. So, the thing about taxes is that everybody has to pay them, and I think we do very well in this community with making our elderly feel at home, I think we do well for our children, and so it's a matter of everybody just pitching in, and I don't think when we make our decision tonight that our taxes are going to go up through the roof, but once again, during our workshop, there was news that seems to be picking up in this community and for local residents. It's obvious if you walk the streets, you're seeing new businesses coming to the community, and we're hoping to continue that trend, and next year perhaps things will look much better, but I don't think what we'll do tonight is any different than what's happening now in any, any community in Berkshire County.
Member Blanchard, did you want to add anything before I open it up to anyone else on the call or in the room, and we're still in public hearing?
No, it's just taxes are an unfortunate, evil necessary, and we do the best we can.
All right. So, we are in public hearing, there are a few people in the room, anyone who wishes to speak on tax classification? Anybody on the call? Okay. Here it is, do you need a motion to close the public hearing on the tax classification? Is there somebody who likes to speak, what I know?
That works for me.
I'm not sure what, what they're talking about.
I think I heard, "Give me liberty," or "Give me death," I think that's what I heard.
No, I don't know. I still need a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. I need a second, sort of second. Roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
There's a yes from Christine. So, that puts before the Board a decision on whether go with a single tax rate or to go with a shift, and if a shift, you would shift, the Board would be comfortable with. So, I will entertain any motion anyone would like to bring forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Since Monday, definitely given this a lot of thought, and I would like to make a motion that the, I'm sorry?
You can continue, it's background noise on someone else's call.
Oh, all right.
Continue.
And so, I'll make a motion that the Board adopt a 1.15 shift for this year's tax rate.
Okay. I have a motion by member Blanchard for a 1.15% shift.
Second?
Second by member DeBol. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just, before we vote, I would like Donna to let people know if this vote is successful, how the amounts that are going to be needed to pay for taxes on a thousand, per thousand. You heard what was just entertained as a motion?
Yeah.
And could you tell the people what that will do as far as their tax payments?
Well, based on an average house of $140,000, it would be roughly $100, so that's where we stand with that.
Okay, and how about for businesses?
For businesses, it's almost, say, on $100,000, for a business, it's also going to be $100, because it's going up almost 90 cents. So, depending on their valuation, a $400,000 property will go up $400.
Okay, thank you.
And to just further clarify, that would make a residential tax rate of $22.62, and the commercial tax rate of $26.89.
If I just may, may interject again, we do, once you vote, we have to submit this documentation to the DOR, it takes them a couple of days, it might change by a couple of pennies, so just to let you know.
Thank you.
Correct, Mrs. Beverley?
Yes, yes, it's up to the DOR, none of us.
Okay, thank you.
While you're all on the call.
And just one more question, when does a town plan on sending out the tax bills after closing state? When, when do we plan on sending out tax bills so everyone in town is aware of when they need to pay their, to expect the tax bill?
Kelly?
Well, if everything goes well, and we hear by the beginning of next week, we could get them out hopefully by November 2nd, and due by December 3rd.
Thank you.
That's what I'm pushing for.
We'll make it, we'll make it.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, good is unanimous.
Great. We'll get working on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time and for calling in, you're more than welcome to stay, but again, that's no hard feelings if you hang up.
Okay.
Hearing was quick to hang up. Oh, she's still there, oh, it's Kelly. Sorry about that. Okay, so that brings us to new business, and...
We did.
Yes, so thank you. Deb would correct me if, right? Okay, got it. We're good, okay. Thank you. There's been so many motions and votes already that it's, could be wrong. So, I'm going to move down to new business, and first item is the November election update, and the Town Clerk, Haley Metzger, is here, if you'll come to the microphone.
Thank you. So, I'm just here tonight to just give a little update about the November 3rd election. I know I've been here the past few times, but you can never have too much information when it comes to the elections. So, again, I mean, nobody knows out there, there is an election on November 3rd, Tuesday. So, November 3rd is Tuesday, we are, hold our vote from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you're voting in Adams, you're going to vote in person at DPW Garage at 19 North College. Again, we're there, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you decide that you don't want to go to the DPW Garage on November 3rd, we are doing early voting here at Town Hall. It started on Saturday, it's gone very well, we were here Saturday, Sunday, we had early voters on Monday, and Tuesday, and again today. We have a total of 314 people that have passed through our door since Saturday, so by noon, it's a page, it gets busier as the week goes on, and then again, next week. So, we will be here tomorrow on Thursday, 9:00 to 4:00 with early voting. We'll be back here again on Saturday from noon to 4:00, and Sunday, 9:00 to 1:00 in the morning, and then again next week, Monday through Thursday. I cannot trust it enough, we're not here on Friday, so we are not going to be open for early voting on Friday. Our voting will end next Thursday, October 29th, at 4:00 PM for early voting. So, if you decide you want to come to Town Hall, we are more than welcome to have you come in. All you need to do is show up at one of our doors, knock on the door, our door attendant or manager will let you in, you need to sign in, you need to wear your mask, and they will escort you down by my office. We have a booth set up, so you fill out your envelope, you get your ballot, you mark it, you put it in the envelope, we are glue-sticking. I never realized when I was in first grade and learned how to use a glue stick, that I would be glue-sticking, I can't tell you how many years later. It's rather interesting, but regardless, and then you put it into a ballot box, and we will count your vote on November 3rd at the DPW Garage at 19 North College, between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00. Obviously, we don't get all those ballots through by 8:00 PM, we will continue to process all those ballots until it is complete. So, rest assured that all of your ballots that are due, that you are coming here or mailing back to us, we will get them processed on November 3rd. I have one more thing I would like to say. If you are not a registered voter here in Adams, you need to register by Saturday, this coming Saturday, October 24th. You can come and register anytime during our early voting hours. We will again be here on Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00, and I will be back again between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00 Saturday night. So, if you have not registered and you feel the need that you want to count between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00, we'll be more than happy to accommodate you. But, you can also go online to the Commonwealth, to the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and you can register online through their portal, and once you do that, you can even actually request a ballot by mail, they have another portal that you can do that through. Or, if you're really having a problem, you can't find that website, feel free to call or office, we'll be more than happy to try to accommodate you to the best that we possibly can. So, again, we're in the midst of early voting for the November 3rd election, so if you'd like, feel free to come on in, and get it up, and you can vote, and I don't know if I have anything else that I'm saying, because I just keep saying Tuesday, November 3rd, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So, please note that if you do decide to come to the voting location on November 3rd, we would really greatly appreciate it if you wear your mask. That keeps you safe, it keeps all of our coworkers safe, and it does keep everybody's safe. We will be sanitizing, we've been sanitizing our markets, we've been sanitizing the booths here at Town Hall, we will be doing the same all day on November 3rd. That's about it. If you haven't received your ballot in the mail that you asked for, and you asked for previously, not in the last two days, please let us know, because we are probably known it out to you. Also, on the Secretary Allen's website, you can track your ballots, so you know when it was mailed out, and if we received it as of yet, we're trying to be prompt as to give the ballots in, whether they're coming through the mail or our drop box out front. We are trying to get them in as quickly as possible, but please be patient with us. There's just two of us in the office, and when we... There's just two of us in the office, and um when we get it back in, it does take us a little bit of time. But we're always happy if you give us a call. We will certainly check to see if we got you in. And if we haven't, we'll give you a call when it does come in. Any questions?
All right, just a quick question. You said we had how many, three hundred and eighteen?
We had three hundred and fourteen come early vote in person. We mailed out over nineteen hundred ballots in the mail.
Okay, on the three hundred and fourteen, were all of them registered voters or did some of them you have to uh tell them that they're not registered? How did that work?
I am happy to report, and since I've been clerk for ten years now, um, I've never really registered anybody to vote and then had that vote. So we've registered four people so far during this early voting process. And they've been able to register. We've registered right away, and they're able to early vote. So, um, so if anybody out there wants to register to vote and early vote on the same day, we're more than happy to accommodate you.
And what do you need from the individual to uh so that they can prove that, you know, their eligibility is correct?
Well, they're gonna fill out their form, and they're gonna sign under perjury that that's mailed.
And this is inside, but once again, I like to thank uh Virginia Newball. She's really uh pushing uh the, you know, the uh voting. I see her posters in a lot of places. And, you know, she's come whole for it. And as I mentioned the last meeting, this is gonna be a super turnout in this country. I believe it's gonna be a record turnout for the history of this country on our percentage wise.
I certainly hope so.
Yeah.
Um, and I will just make another mention, as you were talking about that and having a super turnout. Obviously, we got three hundred and fourteen come through the door. We've gotten stacked that day. We've got about, oh, no, 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 I guess I'll probably say about twelve hundred ballots total. Between early voting and back. Um, but we didn't count, that doesn't really include Tuesday's count and today's count. So we're getting a lot of ballots back in the mail that we'll have to process on that day. But even keeping in mind, if just all nineteen hundred ballots come back. And we do have new early voters that still, you know, if we get them to thousands, we have little over four thousand that voted in twenty fifteen. So that still means that two thousand people still have to go through the polls on November third. So I would ask if you are coming on November third, you're gonna have your mask on. We're going to do our best to maintain the social distance of the city, but if you have your mask on, we're, we're covered there. Um, but please be patient with us, because it does take a little bit of time to get you to the line. Um, we've been fortunate here that we had a line here on Saturday for early voting. But we haven't had a line since. You know, people have had to wait a minute or two or maybe five, but um please have patience with us. It may take a while for you to get through the line and get your ballot and get, you know, voting. We want everybody to take their time. So um, I can't trust that enough that you might have to wait in line. Typically, on a, a presidential election like this, you're typically lined anyway. Now you add COVID and the mask and social distancing, that can add a little bit more of us sanitizing all of the booths and your markers. And if anybody does come on November third and it's lined throughout the whole state, if you decide you don't want to use one of our markers, you can hammer your own kind. I would ask that if you do wear a glass out, so that it will be through the machine.
Are you gonna have a sanitation uh container as people enter? Like one of the big ones that I know the schools have, and they're big ones, and, you know, people can press down, get a little sanitizing.
Well, I'm hopeful that we might be able to bring the lungs that we have here at Town Hall, so we can have a couple of those. I always have sanitizing um a pump spray at each of the tables, and as they leave too. Um, so we will have that for everybody that needs some. And again, our, you know, our coworkers will have sanitizing ways to even lay their table down as they feel the need to do that. And we're again trying to do, and watch sanitizing if we can throughout the day.
Definitely. Sounds like you're, you got a plan.
We have a plan, but let's hope that our work.
It will.
I, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, because of, uh, you see in the media, in social media, all the questions uh as far as the ballot. Now, what do we have in place to prevent if someone does a mail-in vote, prevent them from coming in on election day and voting that way again?
Our voter list is marked already with an X in the square. Have you ever seen our voting list? It prints out with your name. It gives you a little box. And it will have, if you're voting early, it'll have an EV next to it. And if you're voting after T, it'll have an AV next to it. But if you have already voted here, whether by mail or in person, it, it, there will be an X in the box already. So we are diligent about getting these ballots into the computer. We will be working throughout that weekend before, and again, Monday, rechecking our list. Double, triple checking to make sure that that does not happen. I don't anticipate that that would happen though. I just. Our records are accurate. I'm gonna say that our records, our records are ninety-nine point nine percent accurate. There's always that margin of error, but not my own.
I really, yeah, I really didn't think that there's gonna be an issue here. I just wanted to put it out there that there is a safeguard in place to prevent that.
There is, definitely there is. So if, if it were me, and I had already voted early, and I decided, oh, I might want to change my mind about the sort of poll. I'm gonna go in and give my name and my street address, and obviously, they're gonna go, Kelly, you already voted, you know, so. Um, we have lots of safeguards in place for that, so I don't anticipate that happening.
Thank you.
Worlda, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That brings us to the uh next item under new business, restation of wastewater treatment plant assistant maintenance mechanic operator two. Uh, in your packet, there is a letter, there's two letters. One from wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Robert Rumbold, to the county administrator. And I will read the letter from the county administrator. "Dear Chairman Hoist, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the Board's ratification. As provided in section ten of the Town Charter, Brian Marco has been appointed to the position of assistant maintenance mechanic operator two for the wastewater treatment plant within the Department of Public Works. Mr. Marco was hired as operator one in June of this past year. Mr. Marco has electrical, carpentry, and mechanical skills specifically in the operation and maintenance of electric motors and pumps that make him the best qualified candidate for this highly technical and critical responsibility. He will begin his new duties effective October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, at the DPW slash wastewater step one rate of nineteen dollars and one cent per hour, consistent with the current and governing agreement between the Town of Adams and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Ask me. Respectfully submitted, J.R. Green, county administrator." Jay, anything that you can add?
This is a position that's been on the books for quite some time. It was filled. There was a dismissal. Mr. Marco was uh hired, as I said, in June as an operator one. He submitted on the internal application. Uh, and he was hired by Mr. Rumble and Mr. Tolber for that position. So that brings us now to, uh, we have seven positions available at the wastewater treatment plant. So we still have to fill that seventh position. That post, that position should be posted now, if not soon. That gives you a quick snapshot as to staffing over at the wastewater plant.
Yeah, I believe, wasn't it mandated by the state that we had to have several employees?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. This is Mr. Gary's assistant. Walt has a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge, and he won't always be around with us. Uh, so this position was created. I'm not sure if, we did this under my time here, if this was done shortly before I arrived, things, the time starts to, with COVID times. Nonetheless, it's a critical position. Um, the last person to work out, Mr. Marco, uh, was there. He actually applied for that job as well. So the, uh, Mr. Tolber and Mr. Rumble are pleased that Mr. Marco put in for it.
So what was the job uh that needs to be posted is the uh?
Operator one.
One, operator one?
Yes.
What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to ratify uh assistant maintenance mechanic at the wastewater treatment plant uh operator two to Brian Marco.
And then motion by Member Novak.
I will second, but did he say operator two or operator one?
Slash position. Assistant maintenance mechanic operator two.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Do you second it? Any questions? Hearing none, roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. That brings us to um a proposed street number change from twenty Wendell Terrace in Adams to twenty-three Spring Road in Adams. There is a um memo here on the building commissioner's letterhead um that indicates that effective immediately, the above street number, which the current number is twenty Wendell Terrace, um, has, that change would be implemented. Be advised, it's your responsibility to notify the utility companies. This is actually a letter to the property owners. Uh, the property owners are Richard A. and Don M. Malazy. The current number of the property is twenty Wendell Terrace. The proposed number change is twenty-three Spring Road. I did ask um Jerry Garner to just uh call in uh if there were any questions. The memo here does state that this is per the Town of Adams Charter and Code of Laws, section thirteen dash one, numbering of buildings. That the Board of Selectmen may order numbers to be addressed to or painted on the building. Um, on any public or private way, in their discretion, the owner of every house shall comply with such order within ten days thereafter. Um, Jerry, maybe you can just walk us through what the process is that uh somebody needs to um go through in order for a street number change to come before the Board of Selectmen.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
You can, yes.
Okay, good. Um, so what has happened here is that the Malazys own the property that Wendell Terrace is on. Um, the, um, they built the house on the back lot at the end of Wendell Terrace, what actually fronts on East, East Road. Uh, but they were allocated an address off of Wendell Terrace, and their right-of-way was on, I shouldn't say the right-of-way. Their driveway was considered Wendell Terrace. Um, due to some um uh injunctive relief that the neighbors were seeking, um, they wanted the, the Malazys not to have access from their property and on their property um through Wendell Terrace. Um, now, that being said, I have to say, if you have any questions about that, you're gonna have to ask town council because um this lies in the face of, of subdivision control and everything, everything that I've learned over the years. Um, so you'll have to ask uh, uh, town council regarding that um, uh, decision by the judge. But they were told that the Malazy could no longer use Wendell Terrace as access to their property, even though they owned the property. And then the property was, uh, the property owners on Wendell Terrace were granted um the right to own to the center of the road, which means that basically it's not an accepted street anymore. And again, I gotta say, you have to talk to town council about that. So the Malazys were forced to purchase property, two lots up, to grant access and also all their utility services, such as sewer and lark, um, up the street on a different lot that was owned by George Hadad. And they had to purchase that property in order to access their house um from Spring Road. So what they're asking for is to have an address change immediately for twenty-three Spring Road so that the fire services, ambulance, all the emergency services, police, um, can go there if there's an emergency. Because as it stands right now, it's twenty Wendell Terrace, and it'll go to the end of the street, and it's blocked off by stones. Um, there's no way for them to access that. So it's, it's very critical that we get this passed so that they can have emergency services going to the correct address and um, and get to the house if there's, if there's a problem up there.
Thank you, Jerry. I appreciate the overview. Um, anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so Jerry, did, did they go, so all this went through the zoning board, right? For this new uh driveway, it's run the utilities, it's hooked up the sewer, up to the, uh, on Spring Road, or is everything done through the right channels?
The zoning board doesn't have anything to do with this. They purchased the property through George Hadad. And because they purchased the property, they merged it together with their property through the assessor's office in order to make it one lot, and they had uh an attorney do the merging of the two lots so that they could go into the Spring Road property.
Okay, you mentioned utilities. Now, if you're on the sewer line, it needs to be hooked up by the town. Is that hooked up by the town?
The sewer and every, everything's connected already. Every, they've already gone through the proper channels to have everything connected. So they're all set with everything that they had to do, and they went through the proper channels.
Yeah, I just have one question, Jerry. Uh, for instance, I live on corner lot. And is it true that your front door um is where your street address is issued from?
This is something that, uh, under, under subdivision control, uh, chapter forty-one, they have to enter their property through the frontage. Unfortunately, their frontage is on East Road. Um, uh, the prior building official who was here, um, I'm not exactly highly sure they, they did this. But they told them they could go through Wendell Terrace and have their, their access through there. That was not improper to me, because it seemed that, because they owned that property, it seemed like they could do that. They could go through there and access their property. Should have gone through a board, I, I'm not gonna say yea or nay, because like I said, as a prior official, I'm not gonna say whether they did something improper or not. But the, the bottom line is, is that um they can no longer a, access their property through Wendell Terrace, which is off of Spring Road. So their driveway will now be through uh Spring Road. The access that they have for the property is what they call, uh, off of East Road, is what they call illusionary. So um, they would have had to go through a board to get their frontage off of Spring Road through Wendell Terrace, which was their property anyways. Um, I, I, it, it's very convoluted in, in, in that the judge made a decision that, um, I'm very, I'm very confused about. Hold on one second. My goodness. Honey, can you turn that off, please? I'm sorry.
It's okay. I have the dog.
Hold on one second.
I had an earlier board meeting for work today, and it seemed like everybody was.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Anyways, the dog jumped up on the remote. Uh, anyways, um, so the uh frontage was considered illusionary under uh subdivision control, so they needed uh approval from a board to come off of Spring Road. Um, I'm very confused about this whole thing, um, but they were allowed to build there. They had their inspections. Um, and then the um owners, uh, the uh people on Wendell Terrace decide to have injunctive relief, which they were granted. And so now they're coming off of Spring Road for their home. Otherwise, they have no way to access their property whatsoever.
Does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, pretty much, I guess.
Okay.
Confusing, but it seems to me they're doing this to, you know, for safety purposes and, you know, because we're a small town, people know everybody. But this seems like a change, seems like it's pretty confusing, because I realize their house is set back quite a bit, because I know where it is. But anyways, thank you, Jerry.
Rick?
No problem.
Rick, do you have any questions?
I do not.
What is the board's pleasure with regard to this? The action before this would be to uh change the uh street number for, for uh property owners, Richard and Don Malazy, from current number twenty Wendell Terrace to the proposed number twenty-three Spring Road.
Okay, because I don't have it sitting in front of me, I will uh make that motion.
Thank, thank you, Rick. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, because, you know, we should have the opportunity to meet. Yeah, I'll second it because, you know, we should have the opportunity to have people know where they're living in case there's an emergency, so I second it.
Okay, I have a second by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, that is unanimous. So Jerry, I am to sign this memo and get this, and we'll get this out to the various agencies. Is that the next step?
Yes, it is. And thank you very much for that. I know that John Fenske appreciates it because there's a couple of things that we're trying to clear up with him also. John and I are working on it because the fire department is being dispatched to streets that are not necessarily in correlation with the address. So we're trying to clear all this up.
All right, thank you. And I appreciate you following me tonight.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to department reports. Town administrator?
Thank you. I have two items for this evening. The first is, it is fall, also known as autumn, but it's known as fall because our leaves are starting to fall down. Town of Adams is still offering a service where our DPW picks up leaves from town-owned trees and we give a window of opportunity for our residents to rake their leaves to the front of their property. That service will begin the week of November ninth and will continue through to the end of November as their work schedule permits. So we're, we were discussing today with DPW, our weekly status meeting, that we've had some nice weather. There's still a lot of leaves on the trees, so this should give some time for those leaves to fall. So November ninth through the end of November, those leaves can go to the sidewalk to the curving and our DPW will pick them up. The last item I have for my announcement, unfortunately, is a disappointing announcement, but I do have to make it, and that is the Town of Adams is going to resume its search for its chief of police. We have announced this week that we have begun the process to search for our permanent police chief. And interim Chief Bacon has advised me that he is being summoned back to Indiana and unfortunately will not be able to apply for the permanent position. So we have announced that on media this week, starting the advertising process to solicit a good pool of candidates for that. And Chief Bacon has communicated to the members of the police department and he's in the process of notifying the other law enforcement agencies, et cetera, that he will not be remaining in that position. Chief Bacon and I will be speaking next week, just in, in terms of transition. But he has advised me that he's going to help with the process to find a permanent chief for us. So I'm pleased to have his help with that. And we'll go back to the pool and see what we get. And I'll advise the board as we go, as the board will be doing, once again, I believe, the final interview. So that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for the town administrator?
Just one quick one. Last regular meeting we had, I asked about Valley Street. The money was all strange because they're continuing to go all hog. And I'm not sure how much money was appropriated for that job, but they've been there a long time and they're doing a lot of work up there.
All, all of that is within budget from what I'm told.
You understand we're still on budget? Okay, that's all I have.
We'll continue, I'll continue to check that for you.
Yeah.
In regards to the leaf pickup, there's, there's a range of dates that have unidentified. In the past, we tried identifying streets on certain dates, aligning them. So for example, it begins on November ninth. They clear my street, they clear it out, November tenth. I get all my leaves out to the trough, my daily. But anyways, are they, is the DPW going to come back? How will they know? And are they, are they going to go back to all of the streets? You know, how many times? Where from end of November, somebody puts it out on the twenty-eighth of November, let's say, how are we going to know to go back to that location unless we go through the whole, every street again?
They will. That's why it's an incredibly time-consuming process.
Right. So we, so somebody puts their leaves out there to before the end of November and they just expect that they will be picked up?
Yes. And I think at our next meeting, we'll have DPW Director Tolder here and he can give you a little bit more information as to how that process. It's the same process that occurred last year. Last year was the first time that it was an open process. It's my understanding in years previous that it was assigned certain dates to the town. That was not feasible. DPW tells me this is a more workable process where it is, that is the window of time that they will focus on leaf pickup townwide.
Okay, thank you. We could have the director here next minute.
For November fourth. Does he help me remember that as well? Add that as an agenda item. Anything else? Rick, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. So I just wanted to, since we're under the county's major reports, I just wanted to let you all know that by morning, in your email inboxes, you should have an evaluation form for the town administrator. It'll be for the period of March twenty-nineteen through March twenty-twenty. There is a section on the evaluation form to indicate any thoughts you might have from March, well, from April until September as a placeholder for the next evaluation cycle. I understand that it's odd times. There'll be other instructions with regard to the evaluation form, but that will be in your email inboxes by morning. And with the deadline of Monday, November second. So that should be coming. With that, I'll turn things over to town council, the town council's report.
Thank you. Since my last report on October seventh, I prepared for a danger stock here in this report. That was a couple of weeks ago. And the hearing was continued because it was being done virtually and Mr. Dupe wanted to have an in-person appearance before the district board. And that's going to be done this Friday, October twenty-third at two P M. I've spoken to the chief and all our witnesses are lined up and ready to go for that. I'm also preparing a response to amended complaint for judicial review and I reviewed two pending alcohol license transfers.
Any questions for town council? Has there shaking dough in the room? Rick, do you have any questions for town council?
I do not.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The report. That brings us to subcommittee and liaison reports. I don't have anything. John?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rick?
I'll make it unanimous.
Okay. And the camera is still over in Joe's direction, so we'll go ahead and start with nonsense and good the order with Joe.
I don't think I can.
Okay, John? Rick?
Uh, nothing.
Nothing. Under nonsense and good the order, I just want to remind folks that Halloween, there is an alternative, because I believe this is our last televised meeting before Halloween. So there is an alternative plan in place for public safety vehicles to be in all of the neighborhoods in town to deliver candy between the hours of five-thirty and seven P M. I can report that the community has been quite generous in dropping off candy to the police department. I have seen a lot of pictures. I think they're almost running out of storage space for the candy. But they are very excited that they will be able to provide quite a bit of candy to the, in our community. And I believe there's more information about Halloween on the website, but I can know that there was a special release also sent out on that. So just a reminder, Halloween evening is Saturday, October thirty-first, five-thirty to seven. Listen for the music and the P A system, they will be in your neighborhood to deliver some candy. With that, if there's nothing else, I will contain a motion to adjourn.
So?
Do I have a second? It is a roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
It is a yes from me, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. I will let you know if we will have a workshop next week. Otherwise, we will have a meeting on Wednesday, November fourth. That'll be our next meeting. Thank you.